Okay, good evening. Welcome to the May Hoboken Board of Education meeting. Mics aren't on? Yeah, there. Okay. Ms. Good, can you please read the statement of compliance?
This meeting is being held in conformity to the Open Public Meeting Act NJSA 10:4-6. Proper public notice of the meeting was published in the local papers on December 26, 2020, and January 2, 2021. If any board member or member of the public in attendance believes that the meeting is in violation of the Open Public Meetings Act, the Hoboken Board of Education requests that they make a statement at this time. The Board wishes to make those in attendance aware that this meeting is being recorded on video and will be broadcast by the Board at a later date on CATV Channel 77 and Files Channel 46. The full meeting recording will also be made available on Board Docs, which can be accessed through the district homepage. The Hoboken Board of Education is committed to preserving the decorum of the public process and is mindful that we live in an electronic age of computers, cellphone, and other electronic communication devices. Nevertheless, we respectfully request that all meeting participants kindly silence their electronic devices during the course of the meeting, and if use of the device is necessary, we ask that you please leave the meeting room if you need to conduct personal business.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we take the roll call, please, Ms. Good?
Ms. Katamatory.
Here.
Ms. Delira.
Here.
Mr. Delator.
Here.
Ms. Connor.
Here.
Mr. Clubful.
Here.
Ms. McGurk.
Ms. Simon.
Here.
Mr. Kirian.
Here.
Ms. Angley.
Here.
You have a call.
Okay, at this time, I would like to turn the meeting over to our Assistant Superintendent, Ms. Rodriguez Gomez, for the recognition portion of our meeting.
Good evening, members of our esteemed Board of Education, Superintendent Dr. Johnson, administrators, faculty, families, and of course, the most important, our students who are joining us tonight via Google Meet as we remain dedicated to our social distancing measures. I am honored to stand before you today and introduce our talented and dedicated team of principals as they come up to the podium and celebrate you. All of our students, both onsite and remote, deserve to be recognized for remaining focused and dedicated to their selected learning models during these most challenging times. While we are proud... While we are proud of all of our students, those that we will celebrate tonight have truly excelled and proven that no matter what, anything, and everything is possible, especially in our part of the world, Hoboken. So please give us your attention at this time as we celebrate them for doing their best to show us their very best. As a reminder, when principals come to the podium, they will hover over their student's of the month and pin him or her to the screen. This will ensure that only their student is on the screen. The moment will be a more personal one and ensure a better picture opportunity. Once they are done with their honoring, they will simply unpin and all students will reappear on the screen. As is our process, we will begin with the Joseph F. Brandt School, but I want to make a special note that for next month, we will begin with Hoboken High School. So then, uh, but as is our current process, we will begin with the Joseph F. Brandt School with Principal Mr. Bartlett. He will pin and celebrate his selection at the podium and will then introduce the Connors' Principal Ms. Addy, and she will follow suit with this same pattern, introducing our next presenters' Principals. Shannon, tonight being represented by his Vice Principal, Mr. Dickerson, Principal Mara, and Principal Pica Pietra of Wallace, Hoboken Middle, and Hoboken High School respectively. Friends, I thank you for your attention tonight, and with that, I turn the podium over to Principal Bartlett.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Rodriguez Gomez. Congratulations to Lila Katamatory, the Joseph F. Brandt Elementary School Student of the Month for April 2021. Lila was nominated by her second-grade teacher, Mr. Kniglia. Mr. C. said, "Lila has been an outstanding student throughout the entire school year. She does a great job following directions and completing assignments on time. Lila is always offering a helping hand to her classmates and to her teachers as well. She has a great attitude and always stays positive no matter what is happening. Lila truly deserves this recognition, and I'm super proud of her for all of her kindness and hard work this year." When Mr. C. reflected on Lila earning this award, he thought of a quote from one of the preeminent scholars and minds of science fiction, Dr. Emmett Brown. "Your future is whatever you make it, so make it a good one." I think that quote most definitely fits Lila and her personality. She has the tools, talent, and wherewithal to be a success no matter what path she chooses to take in life. I can always count on a fist bump and a smile underneath her mask when she walks by me in the hallway or when I pop into her homeroom. As an asset to the school community, Lila is kind, friendly, outgoing, and gets along with anyone and everyone. She makes sure everyone around her is doing great and feeling included. Lila is always doing her best and encouraging others to stay focused on their goals. Some of Lila's favorite hobbies are horseback riding and anything that has to do with horses, playing tag, riding her bike, and reading the Diary of a Wimpy Kid series. Her favorite subject is art and her favorite sport is soccer. Lila enjoys listening to Imagine Dragons and Shawn Mendes. When she grows up, Lila would like to explore different aspects of running a horse stable. When told she would be recognized with this award, Lila thought to thank those closest to her. She said, "I'd like to thank my mom, my dad, my sister, and especially my cat. I have two cats, but I like one more than the other." To my friends, thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, please join me in congratulating Lila Katamatory, the Joseph F. Brandt Elementary School Student of the Month for April 2021. Lila, I'll have a certificate for you, and with that, I would like to introduce the Principal of the Thomas G. Connors Elementary School, Principal Juliana Addy.
Congratulations to Bella Wong, the T.G. Connors Student of the Month for April 2021. Bella was nominated by her first-grade teacher, Ms. Madeline Veda. Ms. Veda shared that Bella is such a delight to have in class. She is a true example of a well-rounded student every teacher dreams of having. Bella loves learning new material and seeing her friends at school. She said that when we line up for dismissal, Bella often says, "I wish we didn't have to go home. It feels like we just got here." Bella is a student who does not waste any time. From the moment she enters the classroom, she gets busy working on her assignments, participates in class, and follows instructions. Not only is she a wonderful student, but she is always a friend to everyone in class. She makes an effort to get to know all of her peers and plays with them at recess. Even though the setup in the classroom is a little different this year, Bella finds a way to help others. She will ask if she can model an example for a friend or give them a clue to help them figure out an answer. Bella's favorite subject in school is science because she enjoys the fun projects and she likes learning about the engineering process. Bella often creates and builds new designs at home. She always will ask if she can take leftover supplies home so she can create something new later on. Bella also keeps track of the class's daily schedule without being asked. She has a timer on her desk and will set the time to help everyone stay on track. It could be 11:23, and Ms. Veda will ask Bella to make sure the timer goes off at 11:55, and Bella always gets the timer to go off on the dot. Bella has amazing computer skills and always impresses Ms. Veda with what she can do on it. During the remote learning weeks, Bella will view Ms. Veda's lessons that she posts, and then she shares videos with her video links for all the skills the class is learning. One day, when the class had some complications with the Google Meets, later that day, Bella sent Ms. Veda a video on how to use Google Meets. Bella can independently research and create Google Slides on any topic given to her. Bella is reading above a second-grade level. She goes above and beyond without being prompted. For example, when being introduced to a new unit during Writer's Workshop, Ms. Veda will model an example of what the end result could look like. That same day, Bella will have everything that needs to be included and even more. Even though Bella learns very quickly and excels in all subject areas, she never brags or shows off to others. Bella is so humble and realizes she always has something she wants to improve on. When Bella grows up, she wants to be an artist. She enjoys painting animals. For Women's History Month, students had to write a realistic fiction stories about a day spent with an influential woman. Bella wrote about Frida Kahlo and shared how much she is inspired by her paintings. Bella also might possibly want to be a farmer because she loves watching plants grow, and she was thinking about working in agriculture. When Bella is not in school, she's either baking or she's either taking baking classes or at gymnastics or is with her Girl Scout troop. I stopped by Bella's classroom so her friends could share a few words about her. Sydney shared how Bella is always so kind and helps everyone out. She also always is willing to lend a hand to her classmates. Bailey shared that Bella is really awesome at math. She also shared that she loves playing tag with Bella during recess. All of her classmates mentioned that if Bella ever sees any child playing alone, she always invites them to play with her. I asked Bella's sister Bria how she felt about Bella being nominated for the Student of the Month. Bria said that she thinks it's so cool that Bella is awarded this special honor. She is so proud of her. Bella's parents shared that they are most proud of Bella being so kind and empathetic towards others. They shared that there isn't any one particular example of Bella being kind and caring. She's just always kind and caring. It's all the little things that she does. She always writes us cards or notes to tell us how much she loves us, gives us little gifts that she makes, and is very generous with her hugs and kisses. She helps to do the little things for us unprompted. Maya Angela said, "Try to be a rainbow in someone's cloud." Bella, you are a rainbow to all of your classmates, to your whole family, and to the whole Connors' community. If ever anyone is having a bad day, you find a way to make it brighter. This is a truly special quality. We are so proud of you and are so happy to have you as a Connors' koala. Congratulations to you and your family, everyone. Congratulations. At this time, I would like to introduce Mr. Steve Dickerson, Vice Principal of Wallace Elementary School.
Thank you, Principal Addy. I am Mr. Dickerson, Vice Principal of Wallace Elementary. I'm actually here for Mr. Shannon. Our Student of the Month is not here, but we still want to make sure we celebrate them. So we are here tonight to celebrate Paxton Rahaus, our Wallace Student of the Month for April 2021. Paxton is a first-grade scholar at Wallace Elementary School and was nominated by Ms. Evans for Student of the Month. Tonight, we celebrate the many positive attributes Paxton has displayed this year. In order to be chosen as Student of the Month for Wallace, there were a few attributes we looked for. Hard work, dedication, and perseverance are at the top of the list. However, we rarely look at a kind-hearted, helpful demeanor and an empathetic spirit. Paxton has exhibited all of these and more. As his principal, Mr. Shannon is very proud to call him our Student of the Month. When asked about Paxton, Ms. Evans was eager to share. Paxton has displayed kindness and respect throughout this year. He contributes to our classroom community in a positive way through his interactions with peers and teachers alike. He has shown an amazing commitment to his learning. He exemplifies outstanding leadership skills in our remote classroom. It takes a special type of leader to allow for their leadership to shine through virtually, yet he has exhibited this on numerous occasions. Paxton is extremely helpful to his classmates and teacher. If a student needs any tech assistance, Paxton is the first to offer help. I think we can all appreciate that. He has been an outstanding student who is eager to learn. Paxton enjoys reading. He's currently reading the Harry Potter series. Having finished the first book, he has become a huge Harry Potter fan. Paxton enjoys all things Sonic the Hedgehog. He really enjoys listening to the soundtrack with his siblings. He's an exemplary student and possesses the character traits of an amazing Wallace Wildcat. Let's hear it for Paxton, our Wallace School Student of the Month for April 2021. At this time, I'm going to turn the meeting over to Ms. Mara, the Principal of Hoboken Middle School.
Euselen Dominguez, a dedicated student and future Hoboken High School Red Wing, is truly deserving of the honor of Student of the Month. Euselen is a hard-working, conscientious member of the Hoboken Middle School Class of 2021. Nominated by several of her teachers, Ms. Gentile had this to say. "Euselen is a model remote learner. She has embraced this school year and excelled in a setting that involves a lot of responsibility and discipline. Euselen always participates and will voluntarily help out a classmate. I can depend on Euselen as a model student in our classroom. In breakout rooms, she is always a leader and very helpful. Ms. Anderson describes Euselen as an excellent role model in remote learning. She always participates, provides meaningful examples, and asks thought-provoking questions. As a member of the Hoboken Middle School Student Council, Euselen is always considerate of all her peers and wants to make sure everyone is included. She brings such positive energy to the student council. Additionally, as her yearbook advisor, Ms. Ari shared, she is a wonderful addition to our team and offers her ideas in a kind and constructive way. She is a leader amongst her peers. Euselen's favorite subject is science. She likes learning about chemistry, biology, and the background on how everything works and thinks it's interesting because of the complexity of it all. And while science may be her favorite subject, Euselen enjoys painting and reading as well. Her favorite book is So You Want to Talk About Race by Ijoma Aloa. Euselen says it is a well-written book of the struggles people go through because of their race. The author describes it so well, and it made me realize some things I thought I knew already but didn't. Rather insightful. What did you say? Her favorite places in Hoboken are Little City Books and the pier. She enjoys spending time with her friends Lila, Nessa, and Sierra. And when I asked Sierra what she had to say about Euselen today, she said that Euselen is an amazing friend. She always gives me the best advice and will make you laugh. She is super smart and could put a smile on anyone's face. Euselen enjoys spending time with her family, either going to restaurants or watching movies together with her parents, her two older brothers Miguel and Esteban. In the summer, she likes seeing her family, eating outdoors, and soaking up the beautiful weather. Euselen aspires to be a psychologist or a nurse practitioner. She has always found the work of nurses and healthcare workers extremely interesting. Clearly, Euselen is already on a path to becoming a scientist of sorts. When asked about her college plans, she said, "A couple of my top choices would be Boston University and the University of California, Berkeley. It may be too early for decisions, and I don't know if I will get accepted or not, but I've researched a few things about these schools, and the research has made me want to be more dedicated to doing so so I can possibly be accepted." Euselen is clearly determined. Euselen had this to say about being named overall Student of the Month. "I was happy because I knew I was doing well and it paid off. I am grateful I was chosen considering how many other good students there are." Her family is also very proud of her. Mom said, "I'm so proud of her for her accomplishments, and I'm so proud of how far she has come. I can remember her in kindergarten crying because she had to go to school to now working her hardest and doing so well. Thank you for nominating her as Student of the Month." Dad said, "I'm happy because I have watched her work hard every single day, and the hard work has paid off." And Esteban, her older brother, said, "I'm proud of my sister because she works hard every single day and is a good student." I think we all can agree that everyone is very proud of you. Please join me in congratulating Euselen Dominguez as Hoboken Middle School Student of the Month for April. I'll now introduce Ms. Pica Pietra, Principal of Hoboken High School.
Hello, hello. I'm so proud to be standing before you and congratulating Hoboken High School Student of the Month, Senior Stephen Hampton. I also learned after writing this whole thing up, he's known as Just Hampton, right? So that must be his nickname. I always call him Stephen, but Hampton is the handle he goes by. It also speaks volumes when a senior wins this honor in the month of April. Many seniors have committed and tend to take their foot off the gas pedal a little at this time. Not our Stephen. He continues to put forth amazing effort. When I see Stephen, he is always happy. I missed him in the early part of this year because he started off on remote, but he has rejoined us during the third marking period. While on remote, he remained committed to his studies, ensuring no grade below an 85 with most of them in the 90s. He has received honor and high honor roll throughout his high school career and boasts a GPA of over 3.0. Over the past year, I have seen the tremendous growth in Stephen. He was always a very mild-mannered, kind of quiet, and unassuming. I don't think he really knew how fabulous he was, but this year, I see a confident, talkative, and much more outgoing person. As a principal, it always joys me to see the transformation of a student and what they do in four years at high school. And also, might I add, while most of us have gained a few pounds during the pandemic, Stephen has never looked healthier. Exercise and eating during the pandemic, he looks fabulous. I tell him every day, "Is that really you?" When speaking with his teachers, they all say the same thing. Stephen is a well-mannered young man who always takes the time to stop and ask you how you are doing, but he always waits for an answer. He has a contagious smile and can brighten the dreariest of days. As a football player, Mr. Nice Guy is no longer around. He's as tough as they come, a real competitor, and he reads plays like no other. He's a fierce, fierce player on the field, but more importantly, he always demonstrates good sportsmanship at all times. I do believe that his discipline in the classroom has made him a better football player and vice versa. Ms. Kerner shared, "In addition to being one of the most well-mannered students," I think we see a reoccurring theme here, "he is a hard worker who often asks inquisitive questions and has a general curiosity about life and learning. His presentation on airline business ethics was exemplary, and he is a natural speaker. Stephen is the kind of student every teacher would like to have in his or her class. Kind, hard-working, and genuinely has a thirst to learn." I've had two or three teachers kind of read the same exact thing to Stephen, but this one is, this next piece is what I feel sums up the Stephen I've known for four years. Ms. Brower said she wishes there were 20 in every class of Stephen, and they were in search of a senior who could take a shy classmate, return into onsite learning under their wing to help them enjoy the last quarter of their senior year. Stephen stepped up to the plate, no questions asked. I have watched him interact with the student, check on him during class, or just simply ask how he's doing. By fostering relationships, Stephen has made this student more comfortable and more willing to participate in all future senior activities such as prom, senior barbecue, and graduation. Something they probably will both remember forever. So hold on to that and remember that, Stephen. That's an important trait that not a lot of people have, but you do, and it makes me proud. For the next year, Stephen plans to attend Hudson Community College to explore. He is artistic, creative, and excels in business ideas, and he wants to explore programs that combine all these areas. Once again, Stephen has a plan, and I know, as we all do, he will excel no matter what he decides to pursue. You will be missed. Your smile will be missed, but I know we will see you again, and we look forward to that day. Be well, and congratulations, Stephen. I mean, to follow Principal Pica Pietra, right? So, folks, another round of applause for all of our awardees this evening. Thank you for joining us. Thank you for joining us, and good night, friends. And now, I want to share... And now I want to share an exciting opportunity that some of our elementary school students recently participated in. Competitions and challenges are powerful ways to interact with the components of Bloom's taxonomy. We watch students move from remembering to understanding and ultimately to applying, analyzing, evaluating, and creating. Just recently, our elementary students had the opportunity to create solar ovens in the Solar Energy eSTEM Challenge hosted by the New Jersey Institute of Technology, affectionately known as NJIT. They prepared for approximately eight weeks under the guidance of Instructional Supervisor Ms. Jen Park and the partnership of the NJIT Student Mentors. We had two teams representing our three elementary schools in this challenge. The first team called themselves the Fresh Star Innovations.
The first team called themselves the Fresh Star Innovators, and it was comprised of Malaysia High from Connors, Eric Jacobson from Wallace, Albiyan Jashari from Brant, Leila Christofic from Brant, Liba Newfield from Connors, and Noah Schleblach from Wallace. The second team called themselves the Best Engineers, and it was comprised of Samaya Blanks from Connors, Fifi Delara from Wallace, Orin Carnan from Brant, Jonah Lieberman from Brant, Chloe Lopez from Wallace, and Bria Wong from Connors. It is important to note that this team, the Best Engineers, won bronze for the logbook, and Fifi Delara scored the most points in the Kahoot Challenge, helping her team win gold in this category. These students participated in the virtual awards ceremony for the challenge on Saturday, April seventeenth. They answered questions about solar energy and the engineering design process, and they did so with poise and maturity that is far beyond their years. At this time, I would like to present a video of the students sharing their reflections on this process. Please enjoy your young engineers. So before I play it, if our board members who are on this side of the stage can either come off today or join on the other side, so you can enjoy this as well.
Reflecting on our work helped us better understand our flaws. Also, it helped us better understand what we should do next time and what to do better next time we meet.
What I liked most about it was doing teamwork and doing work with people from other grades.
I liked working with my teammates and them helping me and stuff because sometimes I get lost and they start helping me understand and stuff.
The thing that I liked most in the challenge was when we got to make or design.
So what I learned from the challenge, the other team, they put Saran Wrap for windows, and so the light from the sun would come in, and it would bounce onto the tinfoil and to the beaker and would make the water a bit more hotter.
What I liked most about doing STEM was that everybody in my team worked together, and we got to learn a bunch of new stuff together. It was really fun.
I learned about the engineer design process and about different things people can do when working together on something.
I liked when we were communicating together and working hard.
I was probably impacted by, well, we got to work team, and I learned a lot of new stuff, and I met a lot of new people. And also, this was my first time doing it, so it's all really new to me.
I liked being with kids from different schools and being able to make something. I learned what engineers do.
My favorite part of it was that I loved when we built together and when we made our solar oven. I thought it was really fun to engage in teamwork.
I liked doing stuff.
Thank you. Congratulations once again to our students recognized tonight, and I loved hearing from our future engineers. It seemed like they had a great experience. Next, I will turn the meeting over to Dr. Johnson for her superintendent's report.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm so proud of our Students of the Month. It was so nice to hear about all of them, particularly Stephen, as he's exiting from Hoboken High School. Their hard work and dedication to their studies and extracurricular activities is amazing. And how about our young engineers who participated in the NJIT eSTEM program? So impressive. It was so great to see them participate in a new program, and we're really excited about expanding that program next year. It's hard to believe that we're already in the month of May. We're planning the prom, graduation, moving-up ceremonies, and Field Day, while ensuring that everything we do is guided by safety guidelines. Our high school students are also gearing up for advanced placement exams, which are set to run from May nineteenth through June tenth. Our committee chairs will share more information about notable activities that have happened recently or are set to happen. This evening, we are renewing our non-tenured staff members and non-certificated and certificated not staff members. We are also approving the retirement of two very special people, Edward Barfield, high school special education teacher, and Elizabeth McQuillan, my administrative assistant. Mr. Barfield has served the district with pride and has helped his students grow, both academically and socially, for years. He is a dear friend and a valued colleague. Generations of students will remember the impact that he had on them. Elizabeth McQuillan will be so difficult to replace. She pretty much takes care of all aspects of my life, daily tasks, fulfills virtually every district responsibility that's given to her. Liz held the duties of her job and continues to hold the duties of her job with the utmost respect. I can't recall a day that she was not in a pleasant mood. Everyone she interacts with, staff members, community members, and families, are always greeted with the utmost professionalism. Personally, Liz is always there to assist me, and she anticipates when my days are set to be jam-packed. On those days, I can always count on Liz. I'm not sure what any of us in central office are going to do when the halls of the Board of Education offices are not going to echo with the little clickety-clack of her shoes running from place to place. But we hope that she comes back to visit us so that we can hear it once again. We're certainly going to miss both Mr. Barfield and Ms. McQuillan very, very much. This summer, we're all set for LEAP, our summer program, and we're also set to implement new programs such as Studio Ten Art for both middle and high school students, our Kickball League, and also our all-new Ultimate Frisbee League. All of those programs are open to all residents of the community that meet the grade level and age requirements. Today, I was very pleased to work with the North Jersey Jewish Federation to set up a date in August to pack up backpacks with school supplies for all K-5 students in need. I will be distributing more resources to families in need of clothing thanks to generous staff members, parents, and community members, and all principals who always keep an eye out for their students. I look forward to expanding our Call to Care initiative next year as well. Today, we hosted a vaccination program at Hoboken High School for our students. Channel twelve news was on hand to capture the program. Ms. Pica-Pietra served our district extremely well, talking about the program and everything that we did to make this year happen and to also get the vaccination programs in place. But now I think it's a perfect time to thank everybody that participated in making the vaccination programs possible, including the city of Hoboken, the staff at City Hall, as well as the mayor, our health department, Sergeant Montañez, our OEM coordinator, and also Lynette Maderos, our health officer, for making this happen. Also, Leo Pellegrini. There's a whole range of people, including Riverside in our last round and the hospital. So, you know, we are a district when others call and say, "How did you get these things to happen?" They couldn't have happened with every agency in the community working together for both testing as well as the vaccinations. So we're very happy about that. When we're able to, we are going to continue the high school vaccination process as well as offer the vaccination program to our middle school students when that becomes available. On this agenda, we're approving our non-tenured staff, like I said, and we're also going to be approving, or we are going to be presenting our 2021-2022 budget for approval to the Board of Education. We've done numerous presentations already, but there's a couple of things that I would like to make very clear. In this year's budget, I'm very pleased to report that our district's budget tax levy reflected a point-two percent decrease. The charter schools collectively reflected a two-point-two percent tax levy that equated to an overall two percent tax levy. I'd also like to make a couple other things very clear. Since 2019, S-2 required the districts that were affected by the loss of state aid to take a two percent tax levy no matter what. So whether or not districts that are deemed S-2 districts wanted to remain flat, take a decrease, whatever it might be, those districts were required. Their budgets would not be approved by the county office or the Department of Education without a minimum of a two percent tax levy increase. I'd also like to emphasize one very important point regarding enrollment and enrollment growth adjustments. Since the 2017-2018 school year, our district has shown a six-hundred-and-eight student increase in enrollment at the K-12 level plus PSD. That's our preschool disabilities program. That number does not include regular education preschool. There are times, it's very clear when you're looking at the Department of Education's website, so this calculation comes right from the Department of Ed website, that the district takes on some regular education preschool classrooms. Doesn't happen often, but sometimes we do. The majority of our classrooms, virtually all of them, are staffed by providers, Mile Square and Hope's. Both of those providers service our preschool children. But there have been a few times over the last ten years that the district has assumed preschool classrooms, and it's for a number of different reasons. Last year, we assumed classrooms in Calabro School, and the reason we assumed them was because it was the year that we transitioned children from Calabro to Brant to merge the two schools together. The Board of Education was moving over to the Calabro School, and we decided that the preschool classrooms that were going to be in Calabro would be operated by the district. The hundred-and-one students that attended that preschool program, those classrooms that were operated by the district, the hundred-and-one students are calculated and tabulated in the Department of Education's overall enrollment for that year. The following year, when those classrooms are given back to the providers, it's very easy for someone to look at those numbers and automatically think that there's a decrease in the amount of students from one year to the next. But it's very important to know that there is not a decrease in students when you're looking at comparing kindergarten through twelfth-grade enrollment. Those numbers are numbers that are clearly identified as pre-K, and they are not the preschool disabilities children, and they are not the children that are calculated in the ungraded category. So when that happens every once in a while, where there's a blip where we do take on some additional preschool classes or we take on preschool classes, the following year, it's very important when you're doing a longitudinal comparison for K-12 enrollment to eliminate those pre-K numbers in order to get the most accurate and authentic picture of enrollment. So like I said, from 2017-2018 to the current year, we have shown an increase at the kindergarten through twelfth-grade level of six-hundred-and-eight students. With that being said, I'm extremely excited that our budget, even with the point-two percent decrease, was able to absorb all of our academic programs, all of our related arts programs, expanding really many of our academic programs for next year. So in no way, shape, or form was our staffing hurt or any of our programs hurt as a result of the tax levy. In fact, we're proud that we were able to put forward a budget that was extremely responsible. Now, I also want to make sure that I point out that in every year's budget package, the Department of Education provides a particular percentage and dollar figure that districts are able to use as what's called adjustment waivers. The state of New Jersey, the Department of New Jersey, puts those numbers out to school districts when they are in the budget planning process. Those adjustment waivers include things like health adjustment waivers. They also include enrollment adjustment waivers. I want to make sure that everybody understands that while the district grew six-hundred-and-eight students in four years from 2017-18 to the present, our district has only taken the enrollment adjustment waiver one time in those four years, even though it was offered to the district in 2020-2021 school year is when we actually took the waiver. So in last year's budget process, we took the enrollment adjustment waiver. Now, there's then some question about on the enrollment data that's on the New Jersey Department of Education website and whether or not we were entitled to this enrollment adjustment waiver. Didn't our enrollment go down? The answer is absolutely not. Our enrollment did not go down from last year to this year. Our enrollment increased from last year to this year, even during the pandemic. That is taking the preschool children out of the calculation, which we have to do if we're doing a fair K-12 comparison. So that's something that's really important to know. I also think it's critical to know when looking at that enrollment adjustment that when we take an overall look at the increases and decreases per grade level, that there are going to be times when the Department of Education puts the enrollment adjustment waiver out with a projected enrollment, just like they do with charter schools. They put out a projected enrollment that we have to budget for. The projected enrollment is what guides the enrollment adjustment waiver. At the time the enrollment adjustment waiver comes out, you go by what the Department of Education projects as your enrollment growth. So there are going to be times when the Department of Education's enrollment adjustment waiver reflects a number that is a little bit higher than what your enrollment adjustment or your enrollment growth is going to be. And there are times when the enrollment number that they put out is a lot lower than what the actual enrollment growth is. So over the years, I've provided the Board of Education with a spreadsheet. We're going to take that spreadsheet, dissect it. We'll place it on the website for the public to take a look at, and you will see that more times than not, our enrollment adjustment numbers that are given to us as projections by the Department of Education actually have fallen short from the actual enrollment growth or increase. So with that being said, I'm really proud of the budget that we put forward. We're here to answer any questions, myself and the business administrator and the business office, for anyone that has questions regarding our budget. I'm here to answer any questions regarding enrollment, anything that has to do with that. I think it's very important for accurate information to be out there. It's very easy to skew numbers to create a narrative that sometimes is not necessarily accurate. So, does anyone have any questions regarding those numbers? No, not yet. I want to give you time to kind of soak in that spreadsheet, and then we can follow up with questions later. This past week, we celebrated our This past week, we celebrated our staff members. I've been in awe of their passion for their work. Regardless of the position that they hold in the district, every single staff member contributes to the overall success of this district. I'd be remiss at this time if I did not stop for a moment and thank my Assistant Superintendent of Schools, Sandra Rodriguez Gomez, for not only everything that she does, but for making me better in my role every day. She's a steadfast partner, trusted colleague, with a talent for seeing the positive in everything, while helping me to continue to raise the bar toward excellence. I'd also like to thank my business administrator, Joyce Good, for always being there to answer any of the difficult questions and tending to our budget with such care and precision. And finally, principals, vice principals, supervisors, and directors. They continue to impress me daily. As frontline quarterbacks, they make their teams better by setting examples, great examples for their staff and their professionalism and desire to positively affect change. In closing, I think I said this about five or six times this week. I would not want any other staff to work alongside of. They really truly are the greatest. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson, for a very informative and clarifying report. And we will definitely dive into the numbers and circle back with you. Next, we will move on to our reports. Ms. Good, do you have a business administrator's report?
No.
Okay, moving on to committees, curriculum. Ms. Kana.
The committee met virtually on Wednesday, May 5th at 1:00 p.m. In attendance were Dr. Johnson, Ms. Rodriguez Gomez, Ms. Katamatori, Ms. McGurk, Mr. Klupfel, and myself. There are no action items on the agenda. However, I have a few items I would like to highlight that were discussed. The Best Buddies Walk with the middle school and high school was held on April 27th and was a huge success. Next year, we are planning to bring the Best Buddies Program to our elementary schools. We have a new parent initiative, engagement initiative, led by two of our administrators, who will host monthly meetings with a select team of parents. The goal is to engage families, especially those experiencing challenges, to grow their children's achievement with the folk, their children's achievement. Lastly, New Jersey will be requiring students in 4th through 8th grades to take the Start Strong standardized assessment in math, ELA, and science this coming fall. This is new this year. Students will be assessed on what they learned in the previous year due to this year's remote onsite learning approach. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Facilities, Ms. Simons.
The Facilities Committee met virtually on Wednesday, May 5th. In attendance were Dr. Johnson, Mr. Kelly, Ms. Angley, Ms. Delara, Mr. Deletore, and myself. We discussed the following agenda item and recommend for approval, 9.02. The custodian maintenance position at the high school stadium was vacant for the last 13 months, so we have a new, a replacement. And a few items to note. We discussed the summer maintenance projects on various HVAC, fresh air ventilation systems, addition of HEPA vacuums and safety surface repairs at the playgrounds at Connors and Wallace Schools. Also, the fire alarm communication system is in the process of being upgraded and switching to cellular service. And that is it.
Thank you. Finance, Mr. Deletore.
Finance Committee met on Thursday, May 6th. In attendance were Ms. Good, Ms. McGurk, Ms. Angley, Ms. Delara, Mr. Deletore, and myself. We discussed all agenda items and recommend all for approval. One thing to note, 300 water bottles were donated to Connor's Schools by Swell as part of the Hydrate EU campaign. Swell's contribution helps administrators implement safe, sustainable solutions for hydration during the pandemic and beyond. It's with a lot of gratitude that we accept this donation. Thank you.
Thank you. Governance, Ms. McGurk.
The Personnel and Governance Committee met virtually on May 6th at 6:00 p.m. In attendance were Superintendent Dr. Johnson, Ms. Katamatori, Ms. Kana, Mr. Kirian, and myself. We reviewed all agenda items and recommend all for approval. This includes the labor agreement between the Board and the Hoboken School Employees Association, which is our custodial staff and guards. In addition to the agenda items, we discussed the staffing needs for the upcoming LEAP summer program and extended school year. Those appointments will be reflected on our June agenda. A very special note tonight, we have two retirements on this evening's agenda, as Dr. Johnson mentioned earlier. Mr. Edward Barfield and Ms. Elizabeth McQuillan. So I'd like to tell you a little bit about both of them. Mr. Barfield has been at the district for 35 and a half years. So, I actually had to do the math on that. That brings you back to 1984. He started his career at the Ru's School, which at the time was owned by the Board of Education and one of the district's schools, and has been in special education throughout his career, spending many years at the Hoboken High School. At Hoboken High School, he served as the advisor of the Student Council and was one of the founders of the African-American Club, which is one of the most vital student organizations on campus. Ms. Elizabeth McQuillan will have been here for 11 years as of July 1st as Executive Confidential Secretary to the Superintendent. Before that, she held the same position for three years at the Bloomfield Board of Education. And I know for those of us on the Board, Liz is the person who welcomes you in and we get to communicate with her a lot. And she does so much good work to keep all of us informed and looking our best when we have to represent the Board of Education. On behalf of the Hoboken Board of Education and the students, staff, and families of the Hoboken Public School District, we want to wish both Mr. Barfield and Ms. McQuillan a healthy and fulfilling retirement. Thank you both for your service, and you will both be very, very missed.
Thank you. And lastly, wellness, Ms. Delara.
Sure, thank you. The Wellness Committee met on May 6th at 12:00 p.m. In attendance were Dr. Johnson, Ms. Angley, Ms. Kana, Ms. Simons, and myself. No items on the agenda for approval tonight. Just a few things that we talked about that I'd like to bring up tonight. The COVID quarantine requirements for the district will stay put throughout the remainder of the year. Ms., Dr. Johnson touched on the vaccination update at the high school. The first dose was given May 11th. The second dose will be given June 8th to those high school students that chose to get vaccinated. The food service RFP has gone out, and I personally can say that I'm looking forward to hearing from the food service providers that come in and, you know, we can talk to them about how to best serve our district. And as Ms. Kana mentioned, the Best Buddies Wellness Series, we will be implementing that in the elementary school level. We'll be starting a chapter for the district in the schools. So, thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you. Tonight, we do have a big agenda as the district prepares for the 21-22 school year. And I would like to thank the administration for putting forth a fiscally responsible budget while maintaining and growing the academic, fine and performing arts, and extracurricular opportunities for our students. I'm also extremely proud that our budget includes recreational summer programs that are 100% free to all Hoboken youth in middle and high school. And these programs include kickball, yoga, ultimate frisbee, and art. And we really hope the community youth enjoy these offerings this summer. Moving on to public comments on agenda items. Ms. Versace.
Good evening, Roseanne Versace, HEA president, 4th grade teacher, Wallace School. On behalf of the Hoboken Education Association, we want to acknowledge the retirement of Liz McQuillan. It has been a pleasure working with you, Liz, since you joined the district, and we wish you all the best in your retirement. I'm not sure you can be replaced as a, as an executive assistant, but we know you definitely can be replaced as a fashionista, so best wishes to you. Best wishes to you and everything you do in your retirement. Tonight, the Board also voted to approve the retirement of a longstanding member of the Hoboken Education Association and our esteemed colleague, Edward Barfield. Eddie is a Hoboken BNR, a product of the Hoboken Schools and a graduate of Hoboken High School. He has spent his entire teaching career, an impressive, as he told me, 35.6 years in the Hoboken Public School District. Throughout his career, he has recognized the needs of the students in Hoboken and has worked tirelessly to not only educate, but also advocate and support them. He also leaves a legacy of activism on behalf of the HEA as an association representative and valued member of our negotiations team, as well as being an officer in the Hudson County Education Association for many years. Apart from educating, he has also spent many years as moderator of the Student Council and most notably, the African-American Culture Club, organizing activities and events that celebrated the many contributions of African-Americans and their rich culture as part of the American fabric, as well as Black History Month events highlighting that black history is American history. While we are sad to see Eddie's career coming to an end, we are very excited for what the next chapter holds for him and extremely grateful for all he has done for the staff and students of the Hoboken Public School District. Congratulations, Eddie, and best wishes for good health and happiness and a long retirement. Thank you.
Now we'll move on to consent agenda. Is there a motion?
Motion. Second.
Can we have the roll call, please, Ms. Good?
Ms. Katamatori.
Yes.
Ms. Delara.
Yes.
Mr. Deletore.
Yes.
Ms. Kana.
Yes.
Mr. Klupfel.
Yes.
Ms. McGurk.
Yes.
Ms. Simon.
Yes.
Ms. Kirian.
Yes.
Ms. Angley.
Yes.
Motion passes.
And now, public comments on agenda and non-agenda items.
Emily Javari.
Good evening. I wanted to just come by this evening to spread some information. I know this was mentioned in the remarks earlier, but today was, I think, what I would call a very successful event at the high school with the vaccination clinic. Over 65 students and in some cases, a few parents, too, were there to get vaccinated, which I just think is an incredible partnership. I'm really grateful. I know that Ms. Pic was there overseeing everything and all of her staff who are onsite, who made everything totally seamless, to OEM who was onsite to handle it for the city, to the city and the Health Department for their support, and our Better Life Pharmacy for their support as well. I just think that's, it's the ideal partnership to come together, knowing the information that we literally just got in the last two days and to be able to move quickly forward to start getting more shots in arms is great for everyone right now, especially for our district, knowing all of the hoops that you have jumped through to get us to in-person learning so early on. This brings me peace of mind as a parent to know that this sort of partnership is happening, and I'm really excited to see that continue. So thank you all very much for making that possible. In addition to what happened onsite today at the high school, I just wanted to also express that the city has added additional vaccine times to accommodate what is hopefully an increased demand now that the Pfizer vaccine is available for the age group of 12 to 16. So starting on Saturday, which is May 15th, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at 605 Jackson Street. You must schedule an appointment just because we are expecting there will be an increased demand. And if students are coming, if you're between the ages of 12 and 16, please make sure to come with a parent so that we can make sure all the proper waivers are filed. So that's Saturday from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. On Sunday, it'll be 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Monday and Tuesday, 3:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. And all of those times are at 605 Jackson Street. So please help us spread the word because I know how important it is to get those kids vaccinated and hopefully, things will continue to keep going in the right direction. Thank you all so much.
Thank you. Okay, that actually concludes our meeting. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Meeting adjourned.